Thank you very much. Good afternoon, welcome to council. Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty five. Call me until we're at four P M. I can always remind you to turn off your mobile devices on the silent mode. Any additions to the agenda? Very good. Motion of the council, good morning. Accepts the agenda for Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty five. A circuit or amended move by. Council members and the council link. Thank you. All in favor? Very thank you. Any questions of interest today? Very done. I got a motion here that council. Feed by the office minister of the regular meeting of council held on Monday, February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. A circuit method move by. Counselor answered by counsel. And you question errors of missions of those minutes. There now call question on favor. Very thank you. All right, down on to our student council reports. Counselor make the.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm hoping you know this week it's super quiet in our high school.
No.
Because our Falcons are taking a March break and enjoying the absence of no classes and no schoolwork. The grade twelves have also been busy planning our graduation ceremony. So we have given many different ideas and options and we're hoping to take everything into light and then make our grad what we want it to be. So stay tuned for some upcoming fundraisers events for our graduation.
Good. Counselor Anthony, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council and to those of the audience. Of course, there's no sports report this week as it is March break, as you can tell in my voice also. We have begun suing into the spring season as athletes continue to practice for the upcoming Valentine's season in the coming weeks as we return. My main focus this afternoon is a reminder to those students to get their resume updated and apply for those summer jobs in the community. Opportunities continue to be uploaded into the Nararitan High School Facebook page and posted online by employers. Currently, there are opportunities with Ontario Parks, our local provincial parks, Nays and White Lake, our national parks, and then Pocahontas. And lastly, the town of Marathon are looking is also looking for summer students to build their positions in their. These summer student positions are a great way to build relationships and expedite future careers. This is also this also can't be completed by showing up without showing up of Northwest Employment Works for anyone who needs help building or updating their resume, reaching out. And they will be there to assist you. So take the downtime of this week and build your resume as might your application for position.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on down to the verbal report on twenty twenty five budget update. Mrs. Kretchenko, please.
Thank you. Just a brief update for council today, where we're at with the budget here in March. So working back from about a four hundred thousand dollar deficit right now. To get to where we want to be come April, we're going to bring the budget council for approval. So we're looking at labor savings of about a hundred thousand dollars moving forward. We'll achieve this through attrition as well as just redistributing some of the wages from the operating side to the capital side, specifically around water projects. Increased revenues and recreation building departments, fifteen thousand dollars. Administration is going to be recommending one time only. It's not a best practice in what we like to do, but transferring or utilizing transfer to reserves from the areas of the golf course and the fire department. Traditionally carved revenues put into reserves, traditionally traditionally highway calls we put into reserves that we use this year to balance the budget and bring the levy down of seventy nine thousand. And then we're working through two land sales right now that should generate anywhere from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So with that, we would arrive at a number of needing another eighty thousand dollars within the budget that we'll find, which will bring us to about five percent tax levy increase on the residential side. Whilst finalize that number in the coming month. Wanted to point out to council, you know, challenging budget year, but we're actually bringing the budget in on tar or less with last year. When you take out inflation and increases like energy. So we're doing a lot more with the budget than without the same amount of monies we had last year. And we haven't proposed any service cuts or reductions within the budget at this time. A couple of outstanding items that for discussion today that have been forwarded to council that will need finalized ideally today. One is the request from the Nararitan Special Olympics Committee. They didn't highlight any one specific number, but they did reach out to us through the budget process and asked for a monetary donation to help with our special Olympics group here locally. The snow kickers did submit a request after the budget deadline had closed over ten thousand dollars that I forwarded to council. And we recently received a request from the township of Terrace Bay to support the community health transportation van, which I didn't know residents from Marathon utilize. But were twelve percent of the riders of that service are from Marathon. So they're looking at a request of about or just over four thousand dollars from the town for that service. In the past, they received a grant from M T O, but it's not happening in twenty twenty five. So they were funding shortfall of thirty seven thousand dollars for that service. And then finally, for council today, we won't be able to finalize the budget, obviously, until we know where the active living center stands. From a borrowing perspective with the funding applications. So our three major funding applications are all submitted at the federal level, the provincial level. And we just submitted as of last Friday, our ten million dollar application to the Green Municipal Fund. We are going to tender tomorrow or the fall, pardon me, Wednesday. And our class B cost estimate eighty five percent is coming in approximately two million dollars over the class C, which is, I think, pretty good in today's economy. And the big difference between the two as we refine the numbers is this construction location factor, which obviously you're not able to build in until you actually build the tender. And really, that's, you know, people from coming outside of Marathon to work at Marathon, they charge a premium for that. And that's the difference in the numbers. So still lots of work to do on the budget, but we're getting there. But do you want to work through council today and get some decisions around those particular items I just highlighted?
Okay, thank you for the update. Anybody have any questions, Mrs. Kretchenko? Counselor, do you have?
Mr. Kretchenko. I just could you clarify the proposed land sale? Are they included in the budget? Eighty, it's still be eighty thousand depending on what those come in or they're not included and that might cover them.
No, that would be the eighty thousand. Those are included in this number today. All the eighty thousand dollars is still eight thousand.
Okay, so we sold them for a hundred, a hundred and fifteen thousand. Just to make a correct.
Counselor.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so when I when I first saw that thing with the terrace, they then understand that I thought, well, no, I'm not going to. I'm not interested in funding something that's from a community. But where, why would residents of Marathon be using that particular kind of system?
Yeah, I said, I actually didn't realize residents from Marathon used it. I haven't had a chance to reach out to.
I I can answer that. So people in Marathon have access to that service so they can get picked up here and taken under medical. And that. So safe people driving. And actually, I sometimes surprise more people here don't use it, but I guess it's because the service is coming from Terrace Bay and. Like, maybe like all of them would be instead of funding that, why don't we have that service in Marathon?
Well, you look at the cost. Four grand is quite a lot, should be what the operating costs for that service. Used to be a service out of Manitowoc and he couldn't make it work and he was charged a fee on that. Sure, we don't have all the details around this this model, but he was charging quite a substantial fee to go to Thunder Bay. Should be in the bus, but more than.
Well, it's not free to the person.
Well, I don't know about Thursday's service, but he couldn't make it work. So Thursday is being subsidized by the government and by different programs. It's because it's a it's a minivan driven by somebody and paid and gasoline. You know, so it gets expensive. So.
Awesome. Could it be Nosh and the umbrella covers both Macausland and also Wilson Memorial? And that's probably why. But I think before, I guess the conversation goes too far down the road. I think we do need more information from them to be able to make a sound decision. But I think it's a value of value service definitely for our residents. I'm more so questioning, is it a demographic that uses it more so? Do you have to be of a certain age to partake in the service? So questions around that would be more, I guess, important to know before making a decision.
Thanks for reaching out to the C A O, Terrace Bay. Get some information and bring it back in town school or under our next meeting.
Just I think the key question is what do what do riders pay? What's the fee they pay? How much subsidy is there? Because I mean, you definitely want to provide the service that residents they need it, but at what cost? And what's the subsidy rate?
And is it just serious?
Yeah, like our minivan here runs around from the hospital, you have to pay a five dollar fee, right? So it's not covering the cost obviously, but I think a cab riding Marathon is number fifteen dollars as a profit in the street. But so there's a there's a balance there, right? You'll bring the information back. Thanks for the thank you. And then also on our budget. So I'm a little bit concerned about the last, so because I know it's identified as potential. We ran that problem in the past and it's not a crisis. It was just, that's what happens sometimes. We budgeted and the individuals don't are probably doesn't sell. So is that something we can feel comfortable that we the land will be sold this year?
So so we brought it forward today for that reason.
Right.
If we're going to be hopefully within the next four weeks closing those sales. If they're not closed, they will not be in the budget.
Good.
Right? And we will likely have to look at service cuts at that moment or increasing taxes more than five percent to make up the difference. So they'll only be included if there is an actual agreement of purchase in sale in place and it's legally binding. But we had to identify them now because they can help bounce the budget.
Right.
If we're able to close those in the next four six weeks.
Sounds good. And I think your key point when you made mention of the budget, it's the inflationary values over the last year's budget. It's not like we're jumping up and doing a whole bunch of different things and impacting the budget. It's the inflationary values. That's reality, right? Between the cost of operations, wages, gasoline, propane, electricity, those various things that municipal costs operate. And then the other way you just made mention, the only other way is we start cutting services. That means people, services, cuts, and those are the things we really have to look at in the hard draw because we committed to the E L C. That's the big thing that, you know, we know that we're very, we we commit to that project. And if it all goes well, we get the funding, we go forward and we can put all that into one big umbrella without tapping into the operational cost of, you know, interest payments. And no different than the grads. Once you graduate, identify this, finish completing the budget, the payments will start in twenty twenty five. We know exactly what they're in twenty twenty six, right?
And realistically, with the active wedding center, we're not going to borrow anything this year.
No.
It's a site prep here. We pre-load the site, as I've mentioned previously, to handle the way to the pool. So, you know, there may be some carrying costs, but they'll be minor on a borrowing perspective. It's twenty twenty six of construction was to start on the building and the foundation is when the real money will have to start to form.
But even that, I think if you take out the carrying costs of that two point nine million dollars right now, our budget would be in a lot better shape because we're carrying those in for the cost for twenty twenty five, right? Look, we've made that commitment. We know that. So that's what residents have to really understand as well. Any other questions on that? Okay, we'll look forward to the update in regards to the terrace base issue as well as the new future updates over the next four weeks. So.
So can we address this, the two requests from the Special Olympics and the snow kickers? Service will impact the budget depending on council.
So the math tax was was tapped out at the fifty percent. We utilize the math tax. So how much more than the fifty percent are we into the math tax?
We I'd have to check with the treasurer.
Okay.
But I know last year we oversubscribed to more than fifty percent to give to community groups. So I don't, I guess we would have to bring that number back to council.
So what I'm getting at for council, those are because that rest of that percent we're utilizing in our budget offset.
Correct.
So it's either or, there's really that.
Yeah, it's the the math tax is in the budget to help balance.
Balance the budget, yeah. So we just, we need to come up with a potential ten grand plus potential four thousand, fourteen plus Special Olympics of twenty five hundred, three thousand, whatever that could be. We're getting about a fifteen to seventeen thousand or fine. Got the council.
I just wonder if this is one of those years where we ask administration to go and talk to those organizations about we're doing a lot of soul searching about what's really necessary in this budget year. I wonder if that's the way to approach that conversation to say, we're already over, we have no money left. We're now adding to the budget. What really is the the need? And and sometimes, you know, organizations are really reasonable to say, you know, it's not ten, maybe it's a number lower than that. I don't know if that's a positive way to start because I certainly we want to support groups, but we also don't want to. Is taxpayers.
Any else? Counselor.
Yeah, I feel like I'm going to be the bad guy in saying this, but um.
Never a bad guy, counsel.
No, but in the sense of there's a process to follow, there's a process that we've set in place and we roll out in hopes that all the groups submit applications by the deadline. And I just feel like as much as I'd want to support every user group on within the community and ensure that they're able to maintain services and all that. Um, I feel like we set out a process for a reason. I think it's important that we follow the process and because the application was past the deadline. Um, do we look at? What our process is and or will that just frustrate the other user groups who followed the process, got their application in in time? And will it just kind of open up more of a can of worms for us if we were to accept a budget request past the submission deadline?
For both groups, past the budget. The Special Olympics was in on time and what, you know, I'm certainly happy to go back to that group. You know, maybe, you know, we can offer facility usage, you know, rather, you know, than a cash contribution if that's helpful. I'm not sure if it is, but certainly happy to have that conversation with that particular group. You know, that's that's a fee we could look at waving that fundamentally doesn't impact, you know, impact the budget from a levy perspective.
And my big point is I do want to support every user group and not take away from anyone, but there's a process in place for a reason. I just think it's important we follow it.
Well, seems like we got beat up quite a bit in some of the groups by not funding their their ass. So we have to consider that as well. So at the end of day, you know, this is what we get elected to make the tough decisions, right? But you want to contribute to those groups at the same time. I think council would like me to add a point. What is the need? What is the need in each and every year? Is it the ten grand just because the ten grand has had ten grand here before? Or is it something that they can put off on a project request for twenty twenty six? Maybe have that conversation. I have no problem supporting the groups, but at the same time, what's the importance? Thursday obviously gets more information on that. That's four grand ask, the the ten grand from the the snow kickers and then, you know, the Special Olympics, you can bring that back. So I think all in seventeen or eighteen grand, you're looking for our support. I think put in your in your request is seventeen or eighteen grand to come back, maybe see if we can wave those by the next council meeting.
Yeah, we're not asking the budget for at least another month, if that's a week, so happy to do that.
Yeah, I I think like we have to draw the line somewhere, but I don't think the Special Olympics is probably the right place to draw the line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I would be in favor of even if it was only a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred, that's a pretty small ask in general scheme of the whole thing. As far as the snow kickers, yeah, I'm I'm not sure what the number for that one should be.
Well, that's the thing, we can look at and see what exactly we have. Maybe the smoke creatures gets twenty five hundred, five grand, maybe the special one just gets two thousand, maybe it's Thursday gets two grand. I don't want to bring us to eight or nine, then we can squeeze it in, but maybe leave it back to administration, council.
And I do wonder, like, I think in particular with the library, that like lots of these organizations, where their sole funding agent or. But there's some real skill in our administration around identifying grants and and maybe that's the place where, you know, we can help these groups as well. But like right now, we we haven't enough money, right? I think we're all in on the A L C. It's a big, it's a big project. But we do have these skills that I think can help people access money. So I don't know if there's, you know, a role for in recreation or 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 somebody there to to help those groups find alternate source of money beyond this.
Yeah, well, you know what? The budget update today was, you know, for council's permission to see, you know, we're still diligently working through the process. You know, no need for final decision. That's direction that we'll take away over the next two weeks and have those discussions and we'll bring it back to council at that time.
Anything else?
I was going to say it would be good to know what the Special Olympics are for. I mean, we may be having a big conversation in the morning.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the report on the twenty four annual compliance report for the victim order compliance. Mister Perez, good evening.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So it's the annual process that we're through, so we'll go through that here real quickly. So in front of you have a report twenty twenty four, which is the drinking water quality management system annual report. It has to be brought to council prior to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. The review report is one of the methods in which municipal officials may help to fulfill the obligations required by section nineteen of the standard of care. Municipal drinking water systems of the Save Drinking Water Act. And of course, schedule twenty two, which is summary reports from municipalities on regulation S one seven oh three. This report must list any requirements of the act or act and the regulation. The systems of thermal drinking water improvements, mayor's drinking water license, any orders applicable to the systems that were not met at any time during the period covered by the report. So in the submission, you receive three reports, one from Northern Waterworks and two from the Ministry of Environment, which were both inspection reports they did. And through the reports, the highlights I'll bring to you, the two reports that we received from the Ministry of Environment. One, which was finalized on March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. That final inspection received a rating of one hundred percent. So we had zero issues identified or incidents. The second one we received, which is within works in November fourth and fifth of twenty twenty four. We received the final inspection rating of ninety five point seven one, and there was one non-compliance issue identified. And just to give you a brief understanding of where that one came in from, during the inspection period work that's required in adherence to disinfecting protocols. Included in the inspection of rehab work for well number four, which took place on May twenty fourth to May thirtieth. The well is required to be disinfected following inspections and rehabilitation in accordance to A W W A, which is the American Water Works Association Standard. So there's T six five four, standard of disinfestation of wells. However, upon reviewing the logbook, the disinfection record prepared by the licensed contractor was determined that disinfection was not performed in compliance with A W W A C six five four requirements. Other than there was four moments that really came into the inspection from the ministry. Sterile line, which is a sodium based granular form of chlorine was used and it's not approved. So it has to be a liquid form of chlorine for disinfection as per A W W A requirements. There was no record that the well was surged three times after chlorine was added on May twenty ninth. Chlorine concentrations were measured using test strips and as per A W W A regulations. There's, they don't specify a measure method for high range chlorine, but the Ontario regulation one seven oh three requires the use of electronic analyzers to use. Again, the requirements of the A W W A six five four requires two water samples to be collected at least thirty minutes apart. And it was noted only one sample was tested on that May thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So corrective actions have been put in place since then. So now when there's a contractor not performing any disinfecting protocol, Northern Waterworks will review the process and protocols with them. Based on the A W W A C six five four and regulation one seventy oh three, as it's two different bodies that were managed by. Inherence to a disinfection procedure is required for any activity occurs that could cause any type of contamination, so whether it's not just limited to a bear or maintenance, video camera, any of physical work that we do. Do want to say though, despite these issues, these discrepancies, it's important to note that the initial and final chlorine concentration concentrations were within acceptable limits. And the raw water sample tested made it for the toward cold forms of e. coli. And then there was no further actions required at this point for the ministry. No financial implications in annual budget we bring this board for any one of the programs we do. We're bringing this presenting this twenty twenty four D W Q S compliance report for information purposes only. Any questions?
Thank you for that report. Anybody have any questions, sir? Counselor, do you have?
Just a comment that it was a pretty painless learning experience that and we should be grateful for that.
Yeah, no, random that this company does perform our work annually historically and never had any issues. Way into, you know, staffing, not understanding all the regs like some of the older veterans in the workplace. So it's something we don't normally see, but it's again a good step for us to be on.
Thank you. Anything else? So I'm a bit confused because I I we have two regulations, two standards that we're following. What did that take? When did that change?
A lot of regulations do use one on top of another. So regulation for, because there's different regulations for safe rate and drinking water and then also from your well provision. So there's two bodies that we're using. And for our wells, we fall under the A W W A and also for Ontario, the regulation.
But I honestly, I don't recall ever listening to the A W W A regulations in any of our reports in the past. Maybe I missed something, but.
This is the first time we've had a well issue. First time we've ever had a well issue.
Okay, that's right. Wait, I never heard of American.
So Ministry of Environment, both of those criteria, it's not from the government.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
And nice to see this isn't the worst thing.
Absolutely. You know what? Then any inspector that does come, say, Marathon does not.
I just wondered around the water, which is one of the things that gets in trouble as a counselor. I know David, the council junior, you do, but the student council, I don't think you've had a tour of the water.
Oh, no, we can, yeah, we can organize one in the spring, actually.
Yeah, absolutely. A real good learning opportunity.
Water sewer. For the ones. Sure, we'll we'll organize that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for that report, sir. Okay, I've got a motion here that council, everybody accepts the attached report of information is on the twenty twenty four D W Q M S compliance report. Further, that's the report being present, members of the council, their information process only. Move by. That's next, anybody comes about. Any questions? We already had the answer by Mister Perez. All in favor? Very thank you very much. I'm going to give a verbal report in front of a district municipal meeting. This took place last week at Thunder Bay. This was a one hundred eighth annual conference and it was my last year of being a president. I've been a president for just under a decade, took over in two seven, two sixteen, actually. And I resigned the position because I want to continue focusing on Noma's obvious, put my name under your support. A council's nomination back in January for the presidency of Noma. So we'll we'll wait for the spring conference for Noma. Wendy Wright will be the new president of the British Municipal League and Wendy's the mayor of Gilly's, Ontario, which is just a community society from the bank. So it was a really good conference and and we had lots of activity. Thursday, sorry, Wednesday drove up, did a board meeting and debate at the Sprinter in that first thing Thursday morning. We got ready to the the conference itself and a lot of great speakers. Advocacy updates and they go to the Federal British Municipal Strategic Plan, to twenty four, twenty seven, strategic plan, we took it on based on municipalities all having a strategic plan of some sort. So we thought it was appropriate for us to align ourselves with the Noma's strategic plan, which is focusing on highway safety, mental health, and addiction and homelessness. So these are similar, you know, strategies going across the board so we can bring from our municipal level, Thunder Bay, sorry, the Rainy River and Canora districts as well, and then get to Noma. So hopefully we can continue bringing the same message back to government. Talked about investing in dollars, expand and save, municipal investing as permitted under the municipal, some cool stuff that most of us don't pay much attention to. Treasurer, Mister Virgo, is really good now with the one fund, but there's a lot of opportunities there for education for municipal governments. And believe it or not, a lot of municipal guys still don't invest in the one fund, which has got some really good tools for that. And it's got opportunity for in and out with their money. Contracts and contracts with with Shantel Brison in regards to employee dismissal and hiring practices and the remediation and request for. The Labor Act and understanding that it was quite in depth and a lot of a lot of debate around that afterwards. Northern Ontario women's past president, future Cheryl Ford was, she didn't wasn't able to make it because of the weather. That affected, even though we had a good turnout, it did affect some people, not showing up because it was a pretty bad day on Wednesday, driving up. She did a the discussion around women in politics, especially Northern Ontario. And Cheryl's been a great advocate for women in politics, for A M O as well, through the P L O organization. And A M O has also recognized that trying to get more participation. But as as we find from municipal governments, we get beat up a lot on social media. So a lot, a lot less people are getting involved regardless of the sexes, just people not getting involved completely because they're saying, why would I put my name in court to run out of the municipal council? When I'm getting beat up socially for things I make and decision, no different. We discussed today about our budget, you know, people will be critical of no matter what we do or say, so it's just part of life. But some people just don't want to be bothered, they're just staying clear of it. So it's a hard thing to attract and Cheryl talked a bit about that. The locks on the stigma, the local trends in our communities as we all understand the impact it has. And there was a group there from the Thunderbird Street Health Unit passing out the kits as well as an explanation about the stigma around people on the streets in our communities. And it's no different than cigarette smoking, alcohol consumption. It's an acceptable thing in society, but it's not acceptable to see somebody who's addicted to drugs. So it was just about education and then educating ourselves in regards to. Excuse me. So that was a good presentation and of course, all the kids were handed out an explanation of how to use the kits. And it was a a couple of key questions around if the expired kid, if the kid expired, doesn't matter, still use it, right? It doesn't never really expire. They've never found that kit not working. And if you need to use two, there's two in a kit, use two. If you need to use four, get another kit because sometimes. The receptors are not being blocked and that's the whole key of the nonsense, blocking the receptors of the drug for the overdose. So it was really enlightening and understanding that the the whole thing around it. And of course, that's uh that is impacting all of our communities. Uh, that taught that tax explanation in the city of Thunder Bay did increase their math tax and Thursday talked about that, the impact that Thunder Bay has a huge. Math tax that they can they can generate back to the municipality, you know, a lot of money.
What's the percentage?
Uh, they went up by one more percent uh from when they went, so they're at five and five now. Uh, yeah, five or six.
Five or six, we think with all the bits.
Yeah, it's a lot for the city. Uh, Paul Pepe, obviously, was there and talked about it, talked about the impact the cruise ships have. So no different than us once we get our port authority. And with the cruise ships, believe it or not, these are high-end cruise ships, so it's like not like five thousand people, but. Say six hundred people, but at a high-end cost, but they want nature and they want trails. And they want First Nations culture. So what do we have in our backyard? Trails, nature, First Nations culture. That's working with our First Nation neighbors. It's having to introduce and and talk about their cultures and that's what these ships want. And when they get off at Thunder Bay. They want to go to the trail system somewhere. They don't go shopping or anything, because they're not into that, right? They come from big cities where they got all that aspect, but they don't have nature. So it's a key aspect. So that was pretty good. I talked to Paul a bit off the side. I know that Mrs. Kregens, he's talked to us well in the past and it's there's opportunities where our port as well. And then uh I type came and did a good presentation at the end of that day, talk about his uh his opportunities and his support level for his equipment. But also support in small northern communities and how you get out there. So Friday we had uh municipal workforce training and retention and that's a big thing for all of us as we talk to our organizations, we're technically gaining our employees and how do we. Uh, you know, encourage, uh, you know, junior employees to continue to focus on reeducating themselves to become the future leaders within our community administrative wise. And then we had a couple from O M H R, which is very Ontario Municipal Human Resources. Uh, for some kind of uh Thunder Bay, uh Katie and Eric and talked a bit about that in regards to the impact it has and all of us support. And no different in municipal governance and employees, like everything, everybody's looking for employees. I'm just amazed at how many people are really out there. Ontario Municipal Tax and Revenue Association, but this got into the whole detail round. Uh, very happy to see back to the government, like Joe, uh how we should be able to retain the tax sale credits that we have for taxpayers' vision. Which we don't, it goes, we sell a property for fifteen grand, at fifteen thousand is only owed for six, we gotta give the eight to their province, right? We gotta, we we want that to come back to us. We used to have it, then the province took it away. Uh, the tips and recruitment retention again was uh, this was a virtual one on the uh, this was more about municipal bylaws. And bylaw enforcement and C B Os, and as you know, we got Tim and uh Mister Allen, who's combined. A lot of municipalities are going that way, training the people because they can't find, it's not because they want to, they just can't find the people to fill those positions in. So uh, we're having problems with leasing, permits and bylaws. And bylaws in a big city, you might have a a whole department of bylaw enforcement officers. You know, we we got it combined. A lot of municipalities, our sides are going to that that road as well. And then asset management plans, exciting stuff. And we've all been working on for years. I was presented that as well. And this was more around the natural assets though in our communities and uh. So we'll talk a bit about the buildings, but more about the natural aspects, you know, the the parks and trees and. The trails you have within your communities and how you maintain and protect those assets and continue to grow them. It was kind of interesting, but and then of course, the big one for us. Was the E M S and uh we had some really good news after increasing so uh fifty, I think fifty new permits and the and the uh E M S services. Uh, we hired out and they've got some training going on and of course, increasing the availability of the stations and the buses. So actually it was good news from the E M S, it was probably the first time that we've ever had good news from the E M S compared to the past where it was always negative news. Not negative in a bad, but something was being shut down or the employees being there. And so this was a good uh, good thing to share. Then after lunch, we had uh the uh M P P uh from Thunder Bay to Coop, Kevin Holland. M P P for uh for the best spirit of these law, as well as M P Patty Hadju, for the best spirit north, Minister of Indigenous. And Fednor, and they give a presentation on their roles and of course, uh uh we got into some questions throughout that. And then they went really well, so it was a pretty good overall uh event. There was also uh a lot of great sponsors, sure, like really good C D C of Thunder Bay Tour, the Guinness five thousand dollars, that's the first time ever we've received a contribution. For Paul recognized and said, you look at seventy people in the room, they'll be staying two to three nights in Thunder Bay. That's a huge impact for the city of Thunder Bay, right? Whether it's the food, the restaurants, either hotel room, the shopping. Uh, so that there is a big impact from our conference, not huge conference, but seventy people, seventy people, right? So any questions on that? It's all good and uh we look forward to the Noma in the spring. Uh, I just want to take up to also to uh. And now it's today, I think, uh, well, there's a, oh, I'm sorry, there's a one motion here for the Autism Society uh as well from uh. The council hereby proclaim April second, twenty twenty five as World Autism Awareness Day. I prefer that a copy of this proclamation be placed on the town's website and social media channels, whereby. Counselor Ray, the second that council. Want to comment on that. We had the discussion a bit about that, actually, at the Southern District Municipal League. This was after the day's events. But it's about all these proclamation days, we're getting lost and nobody knows what day is what day. Uh, like, you know, yes, yes, uh, March eighth was one of the international good day. And there's a day for everything. It's not the same, we're not supporting you, it's just you have to kind of maybe make it more or more, I don't know, how do you have, what was the answer? We're done, this is good for real. And maybe you have another one for this. So when April second rolls around and how do we recognize it, right? Specifically, we hope that you recognize when people you might know her, who somebody has a child, an individual in their home that has autism, but it's a real tough one, so. All in favor of that? Great, thank you. I just want to take an opportunity to recognize a few people in our community that just attended Thunder Bay on the weekend. Uh, and one one the individual right here with us today, uh CFO superstar, Al Presswell. Uh, who uh who also is in Thunder Bay, recognized by the community and community leaders and recognized. Uh, Sarah Newberry as well, Dr. Newberry and Colleen Reed. Uh, we're gonna be amongst other people at the King's uh King Charles the Third Coronation Medal Recognition. Ceremonial awards of Thunder Bay that were held on Saturday for the exceptional contributing contributions and dedication to the community and uh people that they assist within the community. So Alan, thank you very much. Excellent, thanks. Uh, Dr. Newberry, who's been, you know, practicing in Marathon for thirty plus years, probably, uh with uh Doctor Rancher and they've done great things and now they're moving out. And helping out the region as well. So thank you, Dr. Newberry. Of course, Colleen Reed is a resident actually who came back and really assisted us to get things. Really coordinated our mission. Nice to recognize those individuals and thank you very much for your support. I also want to take up to you to thank the community for my support for the past election. It was a a good run. We weren't successful, but I had lots of support from the community and the region, so I just want to take up to you to thank everybody for that. And my council, of course, for supporting me and Counselor Vance for doing a great job up here in this chair, so thank you. I know he was uh looking forward to it. He was, I'm looking forward to it, but we never got there. Sorry, buddy, but appreciate all the work and thanks, uh, thanks to council, thanks to Ruby for their support, so. Uh, before we adjourn, we will be going to a closed meeting of council to discuss uh. Um, labor uh proposed pending acquisition for uh dis- distribution of land in municipal and local board. So I'll return at the hour of four thirty five P M. We're by Counselor Vance, I'm by Counselor Ray. Thank you and have a good evening.